All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special City Commission Budget Workshop for the City of Gainesville City Commission for Thursday, May 8th, 2025. I'm glad to have you all here with us today. And Madam Clerk, before we get going with the agenda, et cetera, we have some special guests with us today from Novorossk, Russia. We welcome folks who are here from the Chamber of Commerce in Novorossk. They're here visiting several cities here and spent some time at our Chamber of Commerce today. This is International Week, apparently, at the City of Gainesville. Yesterday, we had visitors from our sister city in Columbia, and we are glad to have visitors with us. I want to introduce Steve Kalischman from our Sister Cities program and let him say a few words and introduce Mr. Karanov.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. So in 1982, the Gainesville City Commission unanimously resolved to invite the City of Novorossk, Russia, which was in the Soviet Union at the time, to become a sister city with Gainesville. We hand-delivered that resolution and was accepted, and since then, we've had 45 delegations go to Novorossk. And today, we're honored to have the President of the Chamber of Commerce of Novorossk, Igor Jarenov, and his wife Anastasia Grigorova, visiting us for the fifth time, maybe. So he's been here many times. He knows the City of Gainesville, and I'd just like to ask him to introduce himself and say a few words about our Sister City program and maybe about the fact that tomorrow is the 80th anniversary of the end of World War II in Europe. And it's a big holiday in Russia, Victory Day.
Mr. Karanov.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed Commissioners, that's a great honor to make a possibility to speak to such a high body of our beloved city, Sister Gainesville. I'm very glad to be here, and I'm very glad to see all of you and all the guests and all those who are taking part in this sitting. What can I tell you? Times are different. How many, more than 45 years has passed? Yeah, 43 years passed, and we saw very different times in the relations between our country. But all those times, we have contacts, people's contacts, citizen-to-citizen diplomacy, people-to-people diplomacy, and that's a beautiful thing that such people like Steve and Lauren can organize, and we are very thankful to them for the opportunity that we are able to come here and hope that we will be able to come here and to see you, and we will all invite you to come to our place as time will afford to do such things. So, you know, I'm very glad and happy to see you, and I can, I would like to give you a small present. That is the pictures of our city, here, City Novorossk, and you can have a look how beautiful our city is, and that's why maybe you'll have more, more, well, wishes to come here, to come to our place.
Very good. Let's get some photos here.
And here also the media.
It's a pleasure to have you both with us, and I'm glad you're able to visit any time. We're always looking to happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
We have the adoption of the agenda.
We have motion, second to adopt the agenda as printed and distributed. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed. All right, we pass unanimously with Commissioner Chestnut absent.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to our discussion item for the afternoon, 2025-371 Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Development Workshop with the recommendation the City Commission hear their presentation from staff.
Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. So today, we will start the process of sharing with the Commission departmental discussions regarding the budget for fiscal year 2026. The last time we spoke with the Commission was on March 27th, where we had a workshop and gave some very early estimates based on early revenue estimates and first, a first-line look at departmental operations, keeping things flat aside from the escalation in salaries based on negotiations across the different bargaining units. Since that time, we've had more detailed meetings with the departments, and we have segmented the departmental presentations to you in three sections. So today, we're going to be sharing with you the departmental discussions that have put preliminary budgets together around the charter offices and some of our internal support departments like Risk and Budget Office and HR. Cynthia Ramos will make the detailed presentations, but just so that we can put everything in context, we will have the second workshop on May 22nd. It will be the core operational departments like Police, Fire Rescue, Park, Recreation, Cultural Affairs, and Public Works, and that meeting will also encompass the first public hearing for the fire assessment, and so that'll be on May 22nd. The next meeting is on June 12th, and that one will be for those departments that really do get minimal support from the General Fund but are still very significant in our operational efforts, and they include Housing and Community Development, Gainesville Community Investment Area, Sustainable Development, Transportation, and Non-Departmental, which actually is primarily General Fund, but it is, I call it a nondescript department because it's across the board in terms of the things that we place in that particular budget for your approval. On July 1, we get the property appraiser, release of tax year 2025 taxable value. That actually helps us to refine whether we are going to be able to increase from the 6% growth that we've already estimated on our property tax revenue, and on the 17th, the Commission will, July 17th, the Commission will approve the maximum millage rate. On September 11th is the first budget hearing, public budget hearing. It requires two readings, and so the second reading will be on the 25th. I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion between those meetings in terms of where we set, but once the millage is set on the 17th, that will be the maximum millage rate that can, of course, be discussed between the 11th and 25th in terms of whether it stays or goes down based on what has been set on the 17th. We're not at a point today where we are recommending the levers to be pulled in order to address the gap that we shared with you. As we've moved along in these departmental discussions, the gap has crept up some. However, we're still working with our departments and will be better prepared when we come to you at the June meeting as to where we are. But on the 27th of March, when we had the workshop, we did share that there was a gap of approximately 5.3 million, and like I said, that gap has increased slightly. However, we are not in a position to say, okay, this is how we're going to address it, because I know there were going to be, there will be some changes relative to our revenue estimates, and so we will get there very shortly. But today, I'd like to ask Ms. Ramos, Mr. Mayor, if she would come up. She's been working very closely with Susan Boyd, who is in our Budget Office as our Senior Budget Analyst Coordinator, All Things Requested she is, relative to budget, but they've been working with our departments, and this is an opportunity for you as the Commission to ask any question that you see fit relative to the budgets presented today, and even for those that are not, if there are things that you'd like for us to continue to research and address, we're happy to take those directions as well.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Manager, and I would remind everyone, this is a workshop. It's not a, not a special meeting or even a general policy meeting, so we can't make policy motions, can't pass policy motions today because it is a workshop. Having said all that, Ms. Ramos, welcome.
Good afternoon. So as Ms. Curry mentioned, we last saw each other on March 27th for the fiscal retreat, and we did approve, re-approved the strategic plan on that date, so it's here just as a refresher for you all, and our budget supports all of these goals, critical organization components, and top priorities. Our fiscal retreat recap, we came to you all before on March 27th for a revenue, with a revenue estimate of 156.7 million. As Ms. Curry mentioned, we are still waiting on final property tax values as well as state revenue sharing numbers and are still refining some other projections in revenue categories, so we'll come with another update in June. We also provided a expenditure estimate for the General Fund. At that time, it was 161 point, almost 162, $162 million, and we will be providing updates today for certain departments. When we saw you last, as Ms. Curry mentioned, the gap was 5.3 million. We still are pending items, just as the final government services contribution, property tax valuation, state revenue sharing, and we list some levers that we could look at once those numbers come in and we land on a final gap. For department presentations today, we are going to be focusing on the charter offices and on the administrative departments. They're all starred in yellow on this slide. And the first one up is the Office of the City Attorney. Just scooch over to that slide on my end. And what you will be seeing here is, okay, we lost the slide here, but it's okay. So the way that these department slides are structured is you'll see the title slide, you'll see the core services that the department supports, you'll see their strategic connection to our strategic plan, you'll see position levels, budget trends for, including fiscal year 24 actuels, the FY25 adopted budget, you'll see the FY25 amended budget, and the proposed budget for '26, and you'll see a dollar change and a variance change for those funds. You'll see that we highlight the General Fund by itself on the top portion of that chart, and then all the other funds after that, and we talk about program and service impacts. For core services, for the City Attorney's Office, we have in-house legal counsel and advice, state and federal statutory expertise and law interpretation, legal representation for the city, and to protect and preserve legal rights and assets of the city. They are connected to the best-in-class neighbor services depart, goal. And on the budget trend side, their FY26 proposed budget is the same level as the March 27th fiscal retreat. That's $1.7 million, and the year-over-year change is driven by personnel increases in salaries, and it also increases contractual services by $5,250. All other line items are in line, and I will defer to our City Attorney, Danny, in case there's anything else he would like to add on this slide.
Ms. Mayor, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address it. As Ms. Ramos said, our budget is the same as we had spent some real effort to project forward back at your March meeting as we kicked off this process. Nothing significant has changed since then. Our total proposed budget is a slight increase over '25. It is lower than it was in '23, and in fact, it's a lower budget amount than any year since 2011, other than the last two years, and again, it's right in line with that. The only increases that we have attributed to, there is an increase in salaries and wages that increased, I think they calculated at 3.7%. It's not due to any reclassifications or new positions or new categories of positions. We had retirement and brought a new person on to replace them, so there's no change in numbers. It's just the passage of time and the effects of the Commission-approved raises. The fringe benefits increased higher amount. I think that's largely due to increases in health insurance and pension obligations, but again, that's something we don't have complete control over. And then the real thing that we struggle to try to keep as low as possible is our operating expenses, even though that's really a small part of our budget. But in this case, we're dealing with some large contracts that are both in our document management system and basically our online research and publications, and we evaluate those consistently to make sure that we are as prudent as we can be, but they are increasing, and that's why there's the $5,250 increase in that regard. Other than that, again, I think there's no surprises here, and we'll continue to try to maintain this office as efficiently as we can.
Very good. All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I have a, would you have any else you want to add to this one? All right, Commissioner Eastman.
Just so I understand the process of this, because what we have now, and I don't have questions for the attorney, but just as we're going forward, so what we have now is a $5.3 million gap, which has been increased by some, some amount since that time that we've discussed, and then on June 6th, I guess we'll be coming back with recommendations on how to reduce the amount, but we're not. What we're seeing here is just the roll-up based on what the various charters and what the various departments have come forward with, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so I guess at some point, we're going to be getting, we're going to be looking at making some of the harder decisions, because this is a, what we have before us is not a balanced budget, right?
So what we're, what we're doing is we're showing you each department's individual budget before we come back to you on June 12th with an overall summary of the General Fund with options on how to balance that budget at that time.
Will that include the departments that are not under your office?
Correct, because we're coming back on the 22nd with a set of departments, and we're coming back on June 12th with a third set of departments, so you'll see the entire General Fund, the entire City's Fund budget at that time, by that point.
Okay, and then that would include, that would be everyone, not just the City Attorney's Office, but everyone's, to make sure that we reach that level?
Yes.
All right. Well, then, I don't think I have any other questions. I'll say, it looks, looks to me like 10 years ago, you guys had roughly, I've seen different FTEs, I guess, depending on if they're coming out of special revenue funds, special funds, things like that, but you had 3, 13.76 is what I see from the backup when we talked about this in March. So you guys have roughly, I mean, the same FTEs that you had prior to all of this, or pri, 10 years ago.
It's been largely flat, yes.
And, and then do you have any vacancies currently?
Yeah, we really have two vacancies currently. One vacancy, I'm anticipating we won't fill, and it'll become a time within the next year or so when the relationship with GRU becomes more stable, where I'm guessing that we become a position that we won't need anymore, or I don't know what the future holds, but as of right now, we don't intend to fill that. I have another vacancy that probably needs to be filled, but we're also still dealing with a great deal of uncertainty, and I think it's commendable to our current staff and attorneys that they've been really absorbing a lot of work that is sort of above and beyond, but that's what we all do to try to function in these interesting times.
And that goes to my second, well, I guess my third question. Are you still doing work for GRU at the moment?
Yes, and my understanding from communication with Finance is that they are largely have been maintaining the payments for that, and my concern is perhaps being overly conservative is I'm not sure when that will change. I have no indication that it's changing immediately, but we'll see what we see.
Okay, so that, so they, as of now, they are still paying, and yes, you're doing this significantly.
Our offices are doing their contracts. We are doing their tort litigation, defense litigation through risk management, and they're compensating risk management, and then we pass the bills on to them. We're funded by really four different funds currently, and part of that is the risk management fund, so that part of that involves utility, tort defense. We're fielding questions regarding regulatory issues and counseling. And again, I understand that they intend to and maybe perhaps even have. I've heard nothing officially obtained in some in-house counsel, but until, we haven't seen a decrease yet in the demand for service or the request for service, and we've been widening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. That's why I must come in.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Our next department is the Office of the City Auditor. And the Office of the City Auditor's core services are to develop and maintain a risk-based audit plan, support strengthening of risk management processes, provide independent audit assurance and advisory services, and conduct quality fraud investigations. Their department supports all five of the strategic goals. On the budget trends section, you'll see that their numbers look slightly different than those that we presented on March 27th, and they're primarily due to updating personnel expenditures. An internal audit manager was reclassified to a senior auditor during fiscal year '25, and there are some salary savings offset some of the increases in operating expenditures. Their position levels remain constant, and I was going to defer to our auditor, Stephen Muir, but I do not think he's here, but there are no other items to share at this point with this budget, pretty status quo.
Very good. Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, I mean, I have some other questions for Mr. Muir. I don't know if there's anyone here from the auditor's office that could speak to it, but the, I was, I, yes, I mean, if you could, if you, if you could, the...
I think he's trying to not put you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot in case you were put up there. I mean, I could, a lot of these, so it appears that, so we're at six FTEs now. I look back to 2015, I see there was 4.5 FTEs that were located in the auditor's office. So that's been an increase of 1.5 FTEs roughly.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly 1.5 FTEs.
And there's one vacant position currently.
One vacant position. Is the auditor still doing any work for GRU at the moment? All right, no, no work for GRU. Is there any payment coming, is there any payment coming from GRU currently?
No.
Okay, so what I'm seeing is that it looked like GRU cut $176,786 back in 2024.
For the indirect cost allocation study, yes.
And, and, all right, yeah, those are all my questions. I had a little more for Stephen, but I can ask that privately when you bring it up on June 6th.
Very good, thank you. All right, Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Our next department is the Office of the City Clerk. In terms of core services, it's public meeting management and public notices, records and elections management, lobbyist registrations, administrative support to the City Commission, policy research. They support the best-in-class neighbor services goal. And on the budget trend side, they are mostly the same as fiscal, as the fiscal retreat estimates. Their position count is the same level as FY25, and there are, budget reductions were implemented during fiscal year '25 to an office reorganization. I can let the clerk talk a little bit more about that when she's ready, and personnel levels remain unchanged, and they will maintain the same current service level with these changes, so I'll defer to Ms. Bryant.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Yes, we did a office reorganization, and we were able to absorb that back in October within our, our budget. As we were compiling our current budget, we did notice that with our agenda management system has gone up in price, and so some of those caused some increases, modest increases in, in the budget. We did have, since my taking of office, reduced our staff by a quarter, and, you know, and over the past couple of years have met budget goals, so any, what were your questions, Commissioner Eastman?
I'm asking, I'm asking basically everyone the same series of questions. The, well, looking back on 2015, it looks like there was five FTEs that were located within your office, and now...
Yes, back in 2015, yes.
Back in 2015, and now it's up to, to nine FTEs. What were the, what, what was added, or what was the, the growth in those FTEs?
So historically, I believe there was growth in the support for the City Commission. I think that rested solely in one individual historically, and now it's with four. Additionally, we have expanded our records team in past years because we do, you know, with the increase in population of the City of Gainesville, there's an increase in demand. We process thousands of records requests, and to make sure that those are done properly and to state statute, as is the mandate, it requires a lot of support. And yes, we are still doing work for GRU.
And are they paying for this?
Yes, we, I did confirm with Department of Finance, not super recently, but they did represent that that was current, that they had been current in paying the service level agreement.
But they, but the service level agreement was reduced.
But yes, that was, that they had reduced. It's not the full amount.
Okay. Yeah, I, 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 speaking with people, I was not on the Commission when we were at five FTEs, but my, every, all of the expansion of FTEs makes a lot of sense to me, I mean, from the fact that we had a disjointed records structure, it seems like it was very inefficient. I'm glad that we were able to consolidate that down, which of course put another FTE in there, but probably took overall workload off of folks that were now, that was now split among various people that were not trained in this. I think it probably made our organization more efficient overall, and then, you know, having staffing that's adequate for, for the different Commissioners makes sense, and of course, you lost the person that was doing the, the policy for that. So I don't, I don't have any, any issue, yeah, vacancies as well. Do you have any?
No vacancies currently.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
Commissioner Eastman, Mr. Willis.
Commissioner Mayor, Madam Clerk, how, how will, how do you foresee the elections work going in this coming year if, if all these candidates by chance want to do the signature? I know that even though that we will be the, with the supervisor of elections, but this is, we're kind of coming into a new, new territory a little bit, and I just, do you foresee with, with, you know, nine FTE that y'all can handle everything in-house, that you need to your portion of elections work?
I have worked with staff to, and with supervisor of election staff, we have met and worked out a logistical plan that we believe we can support to make sure all of the requirements are met. Essentially, we, my staff would take in those signatures, and on a weekly basis, they would be transmitted over to the supervisor of election for processing to make sure, you know, they do, they are the experts in that, in that process, and then they will let us know if there's any deficiencies and, and just be in good communication. But from the processes we've set as... Back in two thousand fifteen, and now it's up to to nine FTEs. What were the, what what was added or what was the the growth in those FTEs?
So, um, historically, I believe there was growth in the support for the city commission. I think that rested solely in one individual, um, and historically, and now it's with four. Um, additionally, we have expanded our records team in past years because we do, you know, with the increase in population of the city of Gainesville, there's an increase in demand, uh, we process thousands of records requests and to make sure that those are done properly and to state statute, as is the mandate, um, it requires a lot of support. And yes, we are still doing work for GRU.
Um, and are they paying for this?
Yes, we, I did confirm with Department of Finance, not super recently, but um, they did represent that that was current, that they had been current in paying the service level agreement.
But they, but the service level agreement was reduced.
But yes, that was, that they had reduced, it's not the full amount.
Okay, um, yeah, I, 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 speaking with people, I was not on the commission uh, when we were at five FTEs, but my, uh, every, all of the expansion of FTEs makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, the, um, from the fact that we had a disjointed records structure, it seems like it was very inefficient. I'm glad that we were able to consolidate that down, which of course put another FTE in there, but probably took overall workload off of folks that were now, that was now split among various people that were not trained in this. I think it probably made our organization more efficient overall and then, um, you know, having staffing that's adequate for for the different commissioners makes sense. And of course, you lost the person that was doing the the policy for that, so. I don't, I don't have any any issue, yeah, vacancies as well, do you have any?
No vacancies currently.
All right, thank you, that's my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Willis.
Commissioner Mayor, Madam Clerk, uh, how how will, how do you foresee the elections work going in this coming year? If if all these candidates by chance want to do the signature, I know that even though that we will be the with the supervisor of elections, but this is, we're kind of coming into a new territory a little bit. And I just, do you foresee with with, you know, nine FTE that y'all can handle everything in-house that you need to your portion of elections work?
I have worked with staff to, and with supervisor of election staff, we have met and worked out a logistical plan that we believe we can support to make sure all of the requirements are met. Essentially, we, my staff would take in those signatures and on a weekly basis, they would be transmitted over to the supervisor of election for processing to make sure, you know, they do, they are the experts in that, uh, in that process. And then they will let us know if there's any deficiencies and and just be in good communication. But from the processes we've set as laid out for this new process that we definitely would be able to absorb the extra work.
Okay, I just want to, um, because we,
I mean, we'll have to see, I mean, you know, we have to kind of go through it. Certainly, you know, we think we have a plan that's workable, but if we get get in there and it seems completely overwhelming, we, you know, I certainly will be communicative with the with the commission if there's any changes needed.
Right, we want to make sure we uphold our ordinance and good democratic elections. Um, but I just ask that because since you will have same same number of T proposed, but um, your salary wages grows, why does it grow twelve percent versus more like three?
So we did do a reorganization and I had reduced some staffing that was a higher level administrative and those duties had to be reassigned and with increased responsibility, um, we we needed to align that and I was in lockstep with recommendations from HR and O E I.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Uh, and I would note just briefly that when we compare back to two thousand fifteen, the city of Gainesville has grown in population by fifteen to twenty percent um, o- over that time period. We're a different city than than we were ten years ago and it's a a very different environment that that we're working in from what the public expects of of city government. So I'm not sure that that it's, I, I, it's important to have context uh, and to to see what the growth has been over the years, but it's a different operation than than it was ten years ago, so. Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Our next department is the Office of the City Commission, whose core services are to represent Gainesville neighbors and promote public participation in government, provide public, to provide policy direction to charter officers and oversight of the city's charter officers, support the strategic plan and perform statutory duties. They support all five of our strategic connections. On the budget trends table, you'll see that the FY twenty six proposed budget goes up on the operating side by just under twenty thousand dollars and this is to more appropriately reflect the cost of putting on the events, uh, three events, which are the commission retreat, the swearing-in ceremony and the state of the city. These, uh, the funding for these events was previously in the, in the Office of the City Clerk budget and the Office of Communications. And when there were overage, those departments would absorb those overages, so we're just right sizing those department budgets and moving them to the appropriate category where they should be reflected. And there are no other items on this unless you all want to discuss your department's budget.
I'm pleased to report that we have not increased our FTEs.
Correct, you're still at seven.
Uh, Commissioner Buck.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, the FTEs have remained flat, although there, you know, there are folks who say that we would probably be better off as a commission of of five. Just related to the program and service impacts, when you look at the fringe benefits, I know those are very high for the commission. I remember that Commissioner Engel has mentioned there may be some efficiencies there in the past and they do seem to be high and I recognize that we reversed our salaries back in two thousand twenty three to the previous commission level, I thought that was a wise move, given our fiscal constraints, I think it was the right thing to do. But I wonder if they'll be moving forward, this is more a comment, is if there's any mechanisms on our benefits and pension and what we do here to provide efficiencies there, I I would certainly be interested in that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Our next department is the Office of the City Manager. In terms of core services, it's to provide leadership and supervision of city operations, community partnership and engagement, neighbor advocacy and legislative coordination. This office supports all five of our strategic goals. On the budget trend side, this is the same budget estimate as provided at the fiscal retreat. And you'll see on the budget amendment side for FY twenty five, there's a large increase there and it's primarily driven by the carry forward of ARPA money and street stations strong foundations money, which is budgeted in this department. The position levels remain the same. It also maintains salary, staff salary allocations to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, the Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area, Street Stations Strong Foundations and Wild Spaces Public Places, and that's all of us who support those areas directly. Um, and some smaller increases for general operating expenditures driven by higher cost increases. And I will defer to Ms. Currie in case there's any specific questions from the city commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll answer any questions that commissioners may have. Um, I believe that opposition count has remained stable. I have one vacancy available in the office right now, but actually I'm in the process of filling it. Um, and I am utilizing it in order to address the economic development boost that we plan on moving forward on. And with that, I believe that most of the increase for the salaries come from the increase in salaries and fringe benefits. In fact, it's approximately eighty thou- eighty seventy nine thousand, another couple of thousand dollars in operating cost uh, based on some small escalations, but pretty much the budget stays flat with, other than the increases in the salaries and fringe benefits.
Very good.
And where possible, Mr. Mayor, we do get reimbursements, as Ms. Ramos said, from the ARPA account because of the responsibility that Ms. Ramos has managing the ARPA funds. So we did set some funds aside there for reimbursement. The same thing with the Gainesville Reinvestment Area, Mr. Fullston's salary is in part supported by that budget and in the case of Mr. Mann, Street Stations Strong Foundations, Wild Spaces Public Places, we utilize some of that budget for administrative costs as well to offset salaries. So we do where we can try to recoup monies from those grants to support those funds, those salaries.
Very good. Uh, Senator White, Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Our next department is the Office of Equity and Inclusion. Uh, they plan, guide and advise management on equal opportunity and ADA matters. They collaborate with management to create, implement and monitor programs designed to ensure fair and equitable policies and practices. They support the best-in-class labor services, equitable community and resilient local economy goals. On the budget trend side, you'll see that their FY twenty six proposed budget is slightly different than what we provided at the fiscal retreat. And on, and that is driven by reinstating funding for Journey to Juneteenth at thirty thousand dollars. That's the primary driver. Um, they are also eliminating a position, so you'll see the salaries and wages reduction there in the general fund. Um, they're also going to be eliminating a position under the other funds table that's funded by ARPA. Those those funds are expected to be depleted by the end of this fiscal year. And Mr. Fullston can discuss with you all further what his plans are for that position. And so I can tell you right now that this table shows the reduction in the position levels. And I will defer to Mr. Fullston in case there's any additional questions that you all may have.
Okay, Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, and 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 Mr. Mayor, I, well, I'm focusing primarily on some of the administrative roles, uh, administrative offices, primarily ones that are, that were, as I've said before, previously split between GRU and general government. So while we have certainly changed as a city since two thousand fifteen, I'd say the certain administrative offices are, have changed even more significantly in the opposite direction where we had eight hundred million dollar budget that they were overseeing, that it's now down to, you know, four hundred fifty, four hundred, four hundred fifty million dollar budget. Um, and so I think there's been a lot of changes and so, as I've said previously, I think it's worth kind of taking a fine-tooth comb to some of the administrative roles that were between those two and making sure that they're right sized for each one. Uh, for the Office of Equity and Inclusion, Mr. Fullston, uh, you had, what I'm looking at is in two thousand fifteen, we had FTEs of seven and now we're up to eleven FTEs. Uh, can you talk about the, what what those additional FTEs, you know, the the history behind that, where that growth came from and what what those roles are overseeing?
Um, yes, sir, I'm full and direct to put Office of Equity and Inclusion. Um, the numbers now are ten and not eleven. Um, the one additional position is the one that she's referring to as an ARPA funding.
Right.
So we're at ten and not eleven. Um, those additional positions are to, one was an EA position and the other one was a, two, the other two were a compliance investigator and a compliance manager position that we didn't have before. If some of you were here when I first got on, we had a backlog of cases, an extreme backlog of cases. Uh, so we brought on additional staff to meet those, that caseload, to clear those cases up and to meet the increase in cases that we saw at the time. We've had a subsequent reduction in cases that we have right now, so one of those, two of those vacancies are that. One of those vacancies is also one of our DNI specialists, she just transitioned to a opportunity out in Dallas. Uh, so we're going to end up filling her position again, but she just transitioned out in Dallas. So since two thousand and nineteen, we had eight point five and so now we've, we're at ten from what it was in two thousand and nineteen. Um, some other observations I would like to make is the fact that in my tenure, we have reduced personal services on average greater than one, two, three, four, than the last four directors in my position. Since, uh, we've also reduced operating costs at an average number lower than any other director in this position in the history of this office, uh, back to two thousand, I should say not the history, but back to two thousand and five. So the increase, average increase in personal services cost is down, the average increase in operating cost is also down. The operating cost for two thousand twenty six is the lowest that it's been since two thousand nineteen. The personal services cost in our office is going to be the lowest since it's been in two thousand and twenty two. Um, we are proposing a zero percent increase at this time. Um, and as I always shared, if I need to do more, the commission desires for me to do more, we will look to do more.
Okay, and and you tell, you mentioned the word vacancies, how many vacancies do you currently have?
Currently, I have three.
Three vacancies, okay. Um, and then are you guys still doing work for Gainesville Regional Utilities?
Four.
Four, four vacancies?
Where's the fifth? I I count a compliance manager, I count a compliance investigator, I count a EA and the DNI specialist position I just referred to that she just transitioned to Dallas, where's the fifth one? We cut that one, that is the one that we have cutting the budget.
Oh, it's it's currently vacant, but you're you're.
Really reducing it, I'm sorry, so it's reduced. So as of, it's it's going to be cut.
Right.
There's no coming back.
Okay, so five vacancies, one of which is being eliminated here.
Yes.
Okay, and are you still, you guys still doing active work for Gainesville Regional Utilities?
Yes, um, I get calls from staff members in Gainesville Regional Utilities um, and I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, and 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 then they cut the full cost allocation plan, in two thousand twenty four, they cut about two hundred thousand dollars?
They count about two hundred thousand dollars, but we still get an allocation, uh, really for compliance services from GRU.
Okay, um, all right, uh, yeah, that, I think, I think that, yeah, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Fullston.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Engel.
Hey, so my first budget cycle, so my plan is to ask a lot of dumb questions.
Okay.
Um, Office of Equity and Inclusion also handles complaints across the city, not just internal to the city.
Yes, correct, internal and external, yes.
So roughly, um, you know what the the percentages on that are in the coming year, internal versus external?
Very good question, it varies, uh, but traditionally, since I've been here, we've lowered the percentage of internal complaints, so majority of our complaints, almost eighty-five to ninety percent of our complaints are external, they're not internal. And just because you asked that question, majority of our complaints do end in a no-call finding.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Engel, Commissioner Willis.
Director Fullston, um, I know you've had some vacancies this year. I'm just trying to kind of understand a little bit about, it sounds like a lot of vacancies, uh, about in the end, a lot of staff salary savings, is that just all at the end being uh, swept into our fund balance and off somewhere else? Um, particularly because
Yes.
for your total number of T versus vacancies, if it's that this year you you ended up not spending everything originally budgeted, um, that kind of helps me understand a little bit about how we budget the next year.
So the first question, does it get rolled into fund balance? The answer to that is yes. So the city of Gainesville does not allow, um, departments who saved, you don't get to keep it from year to year, so it gets rolled back into fund balance, as is done in most other cities as well. So no, sir, we don't get to keep it. So when I or any of the other directors or department heads are physically conservative, it helps to find balance number.
Right, okay, and then with the change in workload, you said you kind of went through a backlog in the past. Project predicting what kind of future workload, how easy is it for you to kind of contract some years and expand some years?
Very good question, it's not easy because you would probably hear this from others. Um, hiring at the city of Gainesville is a, is a, is a, is a art, it's a science, uh, and I haven't mastered it. Uh, it's very difficult to hire and I'm not talking about like internal hour processes just to get applicants who are candidly qualified to apply. We get a lot of people that apply for opportunities that are not qualified. And a lot of my positions, I need you to have skills. I don't, I don't have positions, I probably got one position out of those vacancies where we could bring you in and kind of train you. The rest of them, you got to have a certain level of skills to be able to come in and do the work at the level that we need you to do it at. So that piece of it is a little bit more tricky. In terms of, so the reason why I make point of that is, um, we have some potential changes that are coming structurally on the horizon that history tells us, um, and looking at other cities as well, tell us that we may see an increase in the number of cases. And so we have to be prepared for that when that comes, which means I can't wait to hire somebody to get prepared because it just takes a while to onboard people at the city and to hire them and get them in place and get them caught up to speed again, for the level of work that we need them to be able to do. Uh, so that's the challenge in the balance act, some years you have ebbs and flows. Um, and I count those as positives, right? So if I getting, if I'm getting less people making complaints, especially internally, it's my hope that's because the department directors, my colleagues are allowing us to do more training so more people are aware of what they can do and can't do. Um, and so I look at it from that that standpoint.
So in in what you do, training, but training across the city as well, this is partially to Commissioner Eastman's point, but the size of our city staff is shrunk by what, ten, a good ten percent? There's ten percent less training to do as well. How does that kind of shake out in what your needs for FTE on the different staff members who help do that kind of training across the organization?
For the roles that are vacant right now, one of them wouldn't be impacted by size up or down, right? If I eliminated it today, it's not going to impact up or down in terms of size. The compliance investigator ones and the DNI specialist ones are totally different ballgame. It's not going to be predicated on how many people we have and don't have per se. It's really on the data and what we're looking to obtain in terms of what the position's role and function is going to be. And historically, those positions are important because the more compliance investigators we have, the quicker we can get cases out of the door, right? We can resolve them and we can work on multiple at the same time with a level of efficiency that this commission is used to and the public is used to. Whenever you're going through a situation and you are making a claim of discrimination, whatever that claim is, uh, it's stressful, uh, and one of the things is, and there's anxiety. One of the things is that helps with that is to be able to get those cases done more efficiently in a timely manner. So the more compliance investigators that we have, it allows our time to be shortened and the least that we have, it allows for it to be more. So for example, right now, we only have one compliance investigator, right? So we need to fill those other ones because that one person is having the load of internal and external cases. Also, keep in mind, the ordinances of the city of Gainesville, the EO policies of the city of Gainesville have rules in them and we apply them differently whether or not your case was an internal case to the city or whether or not it was an external case. So you need to be aware of all the different nuances of what those things entail.
So make sure you can get those filled out, this is jumping something slightly. At what point do you need to cut an FTE one place and raise the wage of your compliance investigators so that you fill those fa- I mean, we, we do this in police and fire to some degree, right? We say, listen, if y'all can cut on position, we're going to give you, you know, we do the raise, so you recruit. What, I mean, where where are you at on that?
I'm jumping up inside because you just told my. Uh, please do not take that as I'm going to raise your salary, uh, I, I, um, but great point, great question. Um, we can absorb cutting another position and it does not impact, again, the service delivery for compliance. We got to fill those positions, but could I cut another position that doesn't have an impact to that service delivery? Absolutely. Uh, will it have an overall service delivery effect to the office? Yes, but I think I can absorb that, but right now, the question is. But right now, the question is, yes, we do need to fill those roles because it allows us to be able to serve the public better.
All right, well, that's getting a little deeper than.
Yeah.
Budgeting, sorry, sorry to bring it up.
No, you're fine.
Do that in private next time. Uh, thank you, Director Folsen, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'll see any other lights, um, thank you, Mr. Folsen, uh, Ms. Ramos.
Our next department is the Office of Communications and Marketing. And on the core services side, uh, they focus on broadcasting and video production, public information and education, media relations and crisis communications, website and social media management, creative services uh, for print and digital. They support uh, the best-in-class neighbor services and equitable community goals. And on the budget trend side, you'll see that their um, budget is slightly higher than um, the fiscal retreat and it's driven by um, op- uh, changes in the operating budget to account for cost increases in delivering printing and all, and those types of services which have gone up since the last year. And you'll see that their position levels remain constant. And that staff continues uh, to monitor increased cost pressures and for uh, for printing and event production. And Ms. Mart is not here today, so I will take a couple of minutes to just talk about some of the um, highlights that she wants you all to know about. Um, so over the last um, year and going into fiscal year twenty twenty-six, most likely, uh, they received more than three point five million unique page views on the city website. They achieve a social media reach of two point four million, handle approximately five hundred media requests, distribute more than four hundred and eighty E newsletters and updates. They cover more than two hundred and fifty hours of live meetings, publish more than one hundred news releases, lead or support more than twenty events citywide, so they're small but mighty. They produce monthly episodes of TV talk show GNV on the move. They design and brand a very GNV holiday parade, and that's probably an understatement to the level of work they do to support that event because they do much more than that behind the scenes. And they manage uh, the website ADA accessibility improvements. And that type of work will continue into FY twenty twenty-six. And so if there's any specific questions on this department, I will take those. And if we do not have the answers, we'll get back to you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, Commissioner Book.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll actually do these two, two preceding ones, but for the Office of Communications and Marketing, I do feel we're operating at a very high level and a very efficient level in that particular area. And it's because the um, all the messaging mediums that we're using, I think is really, is really allowing us to get the word out in various things. Good, bad, indifferent, transparency, I think is important. Um, just from my standpoint, I, I know that we did um, we did reverse some of our video production because it's very time-intensive and staff-intensive uh, related to some of our city commission-related meetings. Um, uh, so my comment would be, just as we move forward in the future budget meetings, if there's capabilities to consider our ability to boost transparency in that regard, um, I'd be interested in in hearing about that. So that's the, that's just a comment for Communications and Marketing, Chief of Staff. Uh, if you want to go back to the, the one slide, I just didn't get this in at the time, but Office of Equity and Inclusion. Um, Director, just a, just a comment, Director Folsen, nothing that that will require uh, anything today. But I think some of our uh, primary job responsibilities and things that we're doing there, and I can be corrected, deals with um, internal professional development, so making sure we're doing the right things across the organization, across the city. Uh, business compliance is a huge aspect of uh, this particular area. And certainly our grant and funding stream and metrics and ensuring compliance there, I think those are three big tasks that often we don't, we don't understand that come under um, your uh, your area of the city. Uh, but I would be interested in our, in our future discussions is see exactly what those task breakdowns are, a little more uh, granular information um, to help us um, there. And I, I think just on the understanding of what that, um, what those tasks are is, is very informative uh, for the public. That's it. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Book, Commissioner Dr. Walker.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to tip my hat to the work that Communications is doing as well. Um, I wanted to ask this question because I, I really could appreciate GNV on the move. I've had a chance to go over and uh, film at least one episode, but my question is this. Are we currently paying UF to produce there? And if so, do we know roughly what we're paying?
We, I believe we do pay for the space and we can get back to you on the actual cost.
Okay, and the reason that I'm asking is, this is kind of another uh, question within the question. We used to have, to my understanding, some production equipment that was housed in Thelma Bolton. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, did we also produce things in-house at some point? The, the reason I'm asking, I've had brief conversations um, with staff just because, you know, that's part of what my background is in. And I wanted to see us be able to produce our own things in-house. UF is doing a great job, the set looks great, the team that we're working with there is great, but I'm curious as to whether or not uh, what we're doing with GNV and if we wanted to expand GNV on the move, if it would be more cost-effective for us actually to do it in-house and what that would take. So that's really what my, my question is kind of around there. Um, if we might be looking at a bit of a savings if later on down the line, whether it is at Thelma Bolton or somewhere else, um, utilizing our own equipment to produce that in-house.
We'll get back to you on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Walker. Uh, so I'm always interested in weighing in on uh, on Communications. I'm thrilled with what we do with uh, with the size of staff that we have. I think they do tremendous work, very responsive. And Commissioner Book's uh, point that they are absolutely getting the word out in the community. Um, I am always, I know we're not really in a position to do that, but I'm always interested in expanding um, what's possible through uh, our comms network and would would love to see us take any opportunity to uh, to add staff for uh, for Director Smart to to manage. All right, ready to move on.
Bear with me. Our next department is the Department of Financial Services. And they produce the city's annual comprehensive financial report, monitor the city's financial condition and provide financial strategies to ensure fiscal success. And they manage the accounting, revenues and receivables, debt, grant, internal control, investment, payroll, treasury and financial systems administration functions. They support the best-in-class neighbor services goals. And on the budget trend slide uh, section, you'll see that their um, budget, FY twenty-six proposed budget is slightly lower than what was presented at the fiscal retreat. It's also gonna look different than the numbers you saw at the fiscal retreat because we pulled out the procurement and contracts management division of this department, they're under management watch, we'll talk about them next. But for now, this is the core uh, finance service operations that you're looking at. Um, for uh, during FY twenty-five, we also decided to unfreeze two of the frozen positions from last year's um, and fund them, they're being absorbed through the current operating budget. And that's the finance grants program specialist and the finance, the financial systems analyst. So you'll see those two positions come online for them to help them with the work that they're doing. Um, for the FY twenty-six proposed budget, we looked at staff allocations and um, blended those out into other funds that they are supporting. So we updated some of those allocations and that's driving some of the uh, salary and wage and fringe benefit decreases that you're seeing on this slide versus what you saw at the fiscal retreat. And we are also moving the Hippodrome Rental Program over to non-departmental, you know, it's, it's not really a financial services core function, so we move it over to non-departmental, which is what covers all of these um, uh, functions that are not really necessarily owned by a particular department. And you'll see that we, this uh, proposed budget does uh, maintain two frozen positions, and that's the revenue and receivables field collector, uh, one point zero FTE, and the revenue and receivable specialist position, which, which is also one FTE, but it maintains their FTE count at the same level as last year. And um, I would like to bring up uh, Mr. Wen to talk about any, some of his department accomplishments and answer any questions the commission may have.
Welcome, Mr. Wen.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor Ward, members of the commission, Dennis Wen, Director of Finance. Um, I want to provide a few highlights from my department. Um, so we continue to deliver best-in-class financial stewardship and operational support to the city. Um, in this fiscal year, um, DFS achieved several key milestones across core service areas. In accounting, we maintained full compliance uh, with audit standards and produced an annual comprehensive report with a clean audit opinion, uh, supporting a level of assurance that we haven't achieved since twenty seventeen. Uh, we also res- resolved all prior year audit findings, uh, including improvements to cash reconciliation and classification of capital outlay expenditures. In payroll and payables, we already processed over two hundred and nineteen million in payments, including active and retiree payroll. In treasury, we oversaw and managed investment performance for over one point four billion dollars in assets across the city's operating and retiree funds. In financial systems, we've contracted and implemented two phases of the Workday Stabilization Project, enhancing our system's performance. In revenues and receivables, we've issued over twenty-one hundred customer invoices totaling fifty-five million and processed approximately forty-four hundred business taxes, uh, business tax payments. And finally, in internal control, uh, we've conducted and completed management watch reviews of RTS and Ironwood operations while advancing sev- several strategic initiatives, um, reinforcing financial integrity across our departments. Um, some goals we have for next fiscal year are to continue maintaining accurate and reliable financial accounting records to strengthen the city's financial policies and procedures, remain among the top, one of the top public pension plans in Florida, refine and optimize the city's ERP system and apply industry best practices for payroll, payables and revenue collection. If there's any questions regarding uh, Department of Financial Services bu- budget, or budget, please ask.
Very good, uh, Commissioner Willetts.
Mayor, I had a question about the na- the other funds, salaries and wages, so it's still the same, I guess, three point one FTE. What, what changes between twenty-five and twenty-six for that large increase? Did somebody, did an individual person move that is now?
I had, uh, the people, the FTE are, the people are still the same, I just moved the allocation of their salaries, uh, shifted some from uh, the general fund into the pension funds for direct allocation of salaries. Um, I thought that was more appropriate, given the e- the amount of effort, um, they, they kept towards pension plans.
So mostly, ma- mostly it's just a person moved, not that a wage went way up, right? Where their funding came from, from the other funds versus general, okay. That's why I just kind of, kind of wrap my brain around.
Commissioner, I knew that you were gonna catch this. So the thirty-two point four that's listed under FY twenty-six proposed in the general fund should be thirty-one point four. And then it'll make sense because those allocations moved over to the other funds allocations.
So there is a person?
It's, it's so, um.
Not just a swap, but one person actually goes over?
So for example, if someone's salary is one dollar, fifty percent of that will be funded by the general fund, ten percent by Fund A, ten percent by Fund B, and the remainder by Fund C. That's all that happened with those funding allocations, those were shifted over. But the person is still in the same, we're still the same FTE, just the way that we're paying for that position is shared amongst many other funds instead of one fund.
Okay, I think, I think I understand. Thank, thank both of you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I see no further lights, so thank you, Mr. Wen, and uh, of course, congratulations once again on the clean audit, once again. Um, it, it's worth mentioning that every opportunity we get, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Ramos.
Okay, so our next, um, this is not necessarily a department, this is a division that's underneath uh, the Department of Financial Services, but they're currently on management watch. Uh, the procurement and contracts management division went on management watch on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, since then, um, Todd Tuzolino, who sit in the audience here with us today, is the procurement and contracts management manager. And we have been uh, focusing on three core areas. We've been um, stabilizing operations for that area. We've been filling critical vacant positions. Uh, when Todd started, we had about five vacant positions, including the, the manager position that he um, went into. Um, one vacant position, I was in there, and since then, staff has come in and out. Uh, we are now uh, fully staffed on the buyer's side, on the procurement specialist's side. And we're also focusing on improving staff knowledge, uh, getting additional training and certifications for staff. And we also have uh, Barry Dunn, who is going to come in and do an external review of um, department operations, of the division's operations, hopefully starting at the end of May. And we are looking at making some uh, investments in Workday for procurement and contract specific modules that will, uh, for example, right now, it takes staff a very long time. And you're gonna think I'm being dramatic, but maybe a week to put a report together. These types of um, technological investments will allow them to do that by the switch of a button. Um, so we're looking at doing all of those things for the procurement division. And with that being said, I'll go into their core services, um, to manage citywide procurement processes, uh, contract management and manage internal mail services. They support the best-in-class neighbor services. Strategical, um, on the budget trend side, you'll see that FY twenty-six proposed budget increases um, by a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. This is primarily due to increasing the training budget for the department. We want to make sure that um, our buyers are NGI, NGIP um, certified and that um, they have ample opportunity to, to train and learn from best practices from other cities. And this includes also right sizing the operating budget. There were some uh, there were some funding that uh, was taken away in prior fiscal years for softwares and systems that are still in place today. So um, no new money in terms of uh, real requests, just right sizing the department budgets to help them do the work that they do today in a more efficient uh, manner. And if there are any questions, we can take them from you all right now.
Yeah, I see no lights on this one, so let's move ahead.
For the Department of Human Services, uh, Human Resources, sorry, their core services are recruitment and hiring, classification and compensation, employee and labor relations, professional development and training and performance management. They also support the best-in-class neighbor services goal. And on their budget trend slide, you'll see that it is the same uh, projections that you saw at the fiscal retreat. And we have um, on the other funds section, we have added uh, funding, additional funding for the Workplace Stewardship Committee just to right-size um, based on expenditures that we've incurred. And um, any additional operational changes are pending um, GRU. Same staffing levels as fiscal, as last fiscal year, and I will um, bring up um, Ms. Laura Gretz to come over and tell you all about her department um, highlights and goals for fiscal year twenty-six.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Gretz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Laura Gretz, Human Resources Director. Um, you're probably getting a pattern of the directors and the information we're offering. So in addition to the information that Ms. Ramos shared, I did want to provide some highlights about uh, our HR department. Um, as we mentioned, the fiscal year twenty-six budget's roughly remaining the same. Uh, the additional operating expenditures around the Workplace Stewardship Committee. In my eighteen years that I've been here with the city, that, that budget has been the same for all those eighteen years. So we're finally getting it right-sized a bit, so uh, we and the committee are appreciative of that recognition. Um, accomplishments that uh, the HR team has been able to achieve thus far in fiscal year twenty-five. We've processed over a thousand employment applications for a hundred and nineteen new fi- new hires. Approximately a third of those were internal promotions. And what I'm most proud to share with you is that we did that with an average of fifty-two days to fill a position. When I came into the role, it was running close to ninety. Um, so I, I am pleased that we're busting the myth of it takes a long time to hire in a government, um, at least here at the city of Gainesville anyway. Uh, we have offered over twenty-four hundred training courses that have been completed. Um, we have turnaround times for classification and compensation requests have improved, reducing our job audit turnaround times from ninety days to sixty days. We've continued to work closely with the Workplace Stewardship Committee. Uh, we provided a uh, leadership development retreat for them and then coordinated an employee rally, which I think turned off, uh, turned out quite nicely this year and, and much cooler than last year's event. Uh, we have finalized negotiations with ATU and CWA, so we'll be bringing those forward to you for ratification soon. ATU is slated to come to you at the May fifteenth commission meeting. CWA is getting ready to put that contract out to vote. Um, so we're pleased to be making progress in the area of labor negotiations. We're currently bargaining with the PBA and we have plans to do wage reopeners with IAFF and FOP in July. Uh, the Emerging Leaders Program is in its final semester, this is close to a two-year leadership development program. Uh, the students are currently working on their capstone project as they're touring both city and GRU departments to understand all the inner workings of the city and how that impacts leaders and, and how we tres- traverse um, our territory and moving forward. And they are on track to graduate later in the summer of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're continuing ongoing participation in the Workday Stabilization Project to optimize the system and improve efficiency. And we have more than twenty of our HR requirements that have already been successfully deployed during that stabilization effort. Um, as I'm sure you're going to ask, and I'm happy to answer more questions about this, but our HR team is continuing to provide the full host of HR services to GRU at this time. They are working to build their own HR department um, and are, and are starting the active uh, hiring process of folks and getting people on-boarded. We have a target date of a transition for December thirty-first. We have a target date of a transition for December thirty-first of twenty-five, but there's a lot of pieces involved with that. We anticipate it's probably going to stretch into the first quarter of twenty-six calendar year. Uh, it is a considerable lift, and we are trying to make sure that we balance helping with that transition, but also attending to our, our needs here at General Government and the Workday Stabilization Project. Uh, it should be noted, in fiscal year twenty-three, our FTE count was at twenty-six. In FY twenty-four, we reduced that to twenty-three, and in FY twenty-five, we reduced it again to twenty-one. That's a twenty-four percent reduction in staff. It's where it will remain as projected for fiscal year twenty-six. However, we anticipate that there will be operational changes, of course, once GRU transitions to their own, uh, HR department. So we have some vacancies on file currently, and we're kind of pausing on those to, to kinda see what shakes out with GRU with the transition, so that we can minimize any impact to our people. I do want to make, uh, what I think is an important statement, and I don't think it's unique to just HR, I think it's across the board with all of our departments. We have done a lot of reductions over the past fiscal, fiscal years, as I know you're aware. And it requires, as the city attorney mentioned, that our existing staff absorb a lot of work. Uh, we monitor that very carefully, because we wanna try to minimize burnout and stress as much as we can. Um, but I, I just wanna commend not just the employees and HR, but across the city who have had to continue to do that over the past few years. Uh, anticipated goals for fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, we are looking to have a successful transition of HR services over to GRU. Uh, we are rebranding and enhancing our learning and development offerings across the city. We will continue to work to update and refine policies and procedures with an emphasis on compliance matters. We will continue to support the Workplace Stewardship Committee efforts. We are going to, uh, conduct an analysis of our pay plan, and we are looking to complete wage reopener negotiations as needed. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Gretz. Um, the, the, from FY twenty-four to twenty-five, that reduction in FTE seems to make sense to me with truly a smaller operation across the city. It's both needed budgetarily, but fewer employees, but definitely by the time we get through all the way this year. You know, if we reduce the size of, um, particularly non-GRU, um, employees, almost ten percent. How, you say you're gonna lea- you're currently leaving, potentially leaving some of your vacancies open. Um, 'cause if we're talking at the end of this year, or beginning in the next, the quarter, I guess, in year twenty-six, do you, do you think you need full funding, though, to see how it shakes out? And then do you expect, and that's going into next year?
Right.
But if GRU separates all, all their HR, do you see the ability to pare down a little bit here at FTE?
We're anticipating that, and which is part of why, currently, we have five vacancies. There are a couple that we're going to work to actively fill now, but the others, we're gonna hold, because, just to see where things shake out in terms of workload.
Yeah, I feel like this is-
Once GRU separates.
I feel like this is one where we have to, I, I'd love to save money if we think, you know, in March of next year, we don't need it. Um, but I also wanna make sure you have what you need to manage the transition, um, because if GRU says, oh, we need an extra, which was kind of what we've already experienced, uh, we need more time, we need more time. Um, it's to some degree that, that leaves us hanging, 'cause we have the budget for it now.
Correct, yeah. It, it, um, it puts, it provides an interesting situation in which we just kinda have to try to project and kind of read tea leaves, uh, to see where things go. I mean, and, and it's important to note, while they're building their HR department, we are actively working to, uh, transition, uh, knowledge, right? And, and knowledge transfer to the new folks, help them understand how things work. They'll be using their own system separate from Workday, but there's still knowledge that we will need to impart upon those folks, and it will be a, and that's an additional lift in, in addition to the regular services that we provide for them.
Do we, how do we currently budget what they're paying? Is, is, is part of this transition budgeted in by what they pay? They pay us currently, you know, the current, the current transfer of whatever kind of funds? But that was just kind of for the normal situation. Did we budget, and I don't know if this is a question from Madam Manager, did we have any conversation about the transition? Are we getting any extra funds from them for, for the mere headache of transition?
So, sure, I'll be happy to speak to that. No, there has not been anything that's, uh, currently been negotiated. Now, I will say, and, and, um, our finance director may have more to say about this, we're currently working with our consultant with the indirect cost study, and that is, I know that is an element that they are looking at. I don't believe that work has been completed yet, but I'm, I'm sure that's something that they're looking at.
Okay. I think that's all. Thank you, Ms. Gretz. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. And I'm glad you mentioned, uh, Ms. Gretz and, and Mr. Charney, the, uh, the additional workload that, that is created for, for people who, whose positions are not eliminated. Uh, the work doesn't get smaller. Uh, that, that there are more people in Gainesville today than there were when we started having to cut positions, and all those people need to be served. And we're, we're not, we will not see a, a, a lower workload. Uh, people still need to be served at, at the level that, that they expect, and, um, I wanna recognize that, that truth, that everyone, uh, who is here and working for the City of Gainesville is working harder than ever, because we have a smaller team. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I see no further lights, so, uh, hold on just a second.
More, I think this is for the mayor. How are we budgeting going into next year for that income from GRU, particularly for this HR, um, piece? Do we?
They're budgeted full. They're, they're budgeted full, as she mentioned, she has vacancies that are budgeted. But as we move into the first quarter of twenty-six, based on the evaluation of what is really required for her to maintain, from Ms. Gretz, to maintain management and HR, we will adjust the budget. But now it's fully, it's fully budgeted for twenty-six.
Everything's fully budgeted, both revenue and expense?
Yes.
And then perhaps mid-year budget amendment, where we might, we might adjust both revenue and expense?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis, and Ms. Ramos.
Our next department is the Office of Management and Budget. The Office of Management and Budget Plans develops and monitors general government's financial and operating plan. They, uh, provide internal management consulting to maximize organizational efficiencies and project management services, and they facilitate the development of and monitor the progress of the strategic plan. Uh, they support the best-in-class neighbor services. On the budget trend side, you'll see that the proposed budget is higher than what you saw at the fiscal retreat, and this is driven by, um, increasing the starting position of the salaries and wages. It's been difficult to fill vacant positions here because of, uh, the salary, uh, estimates that we had in place, so we've adjusted those. And we've also added funding for increased training opportunities in that, uh, department. Um, it's a one-person department right now, Susan, and, uh, with my support and some support from Steve, uh, Varvel. So thank you, very grateful for that. Um, but we are working to actively fill, uh, the vacant positions in that area. And if there's any questions, um, same funding, same position levels in twenty-six as twenty-five, and if there's any other additional questions, we'll take them from the commission at this time.
All right, Commissioner Book.
Yeah, thank you. So this would be one that, you know, as we go forward in the, uh, budget discussions, we'd like to see actually probably the granular details about those particular salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. I see no further lights, so let's move ahead.
Okay. The next, uh, department is the Risk Management Department. They, uh, administer the city's risk management policies, procure insurance and medical coverages, and review and respond to all claims. Uh, they, uh, provide employee well-being clinic and programs, and they, uh, manage the health and retirement benefits and services. They support the best-in-class neighbor, uh, services strategic goal. And on the budget trend side, you'll see that this is slightly different than what was presented at the fiscal retreat. On the general fund side, we've updated the cost of the, of the security, uh, services contract at City Hall. So there's increased hours and a different schedule there, and that's what's being account- that's what accounts for the increase in, um, expenditure level. And on the other funds, uh, this department is primarily funded by other funds, uh, the General Insurance Fund and the Ehab Fund. And, um, those increases that you see year over year are primarily driven by claims, increases or, uh, additional, um, insurance premiums that have gone up year over year. And if there are any other detail, more detailed questions than that, I will, um, let Mr. Steve Varvel come up and talk to you about his department, um, goals for fiscal year twenty-six.
Welcome, Mr. Ramos.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Um, I wanna start by saying how true proud I am of the staff that I put together. They have actually stuck around for a while, so we have some continuity in, in services and message. Um, some of the, uh, accomplishments year-to-date, um, we had a successful open enrollment. That sounds like a simple thing, but it's really not. We have, um, over two thousand employees, eight, ten voluntary, and two group benefits plus retirement. Um, so a lot of change can come, uh, through that, uh, process, and, and it's not a simple thing to get from when they push a button, to get it to the vendor in a, in an accurate manner, so that their benefits are not disruptive. One thing we do at the end of it is we take a look in January, and we try to figure out things that, um, took a lot of time in January, that if we had put something in the process to, to, uh, uh, cut down on that, we did. So this year, we initiated a, kind of like a second chance on flexible spending account. Seems like a small thing, but sometimes people don't realize they forgot to renew their flexible spending account till January. So we have to go back into the system and override it. And, um, so what we did this year is we reached out to everybody that had a flexible spending account in twenty-four, but didn't elect in twenty-five. It still worked here, obviously. Um, and made sure that that was an election they wanted, and ninety percent of them did not know they didn't reelect it. So it added value to the employee at the same time, and reduced staff's effort in January to fix those things. Um, not all, uh, things are bad with, uh, with the cost of our health plan and, and the escalating, uh, um, we spent a lot of time on focusing on education, and we're starting to see, um, some, uh, benefits of that. Our ER uses is down ten percent year over year, year-to-date. But what's really important about that is that our avoidable ER visits, ones that went there, but they were avoidable by using different levels of, they're down fifty percent. Um, I think part of that has to do with people figuring out now that the standalone emergency rooms are emergency rooms and not urgent care centers, but that, you have to educate people. Um, uh, we have closed already nineteen of our twenty-nine open auto claims this year, so we are going in early on the ones where, where liability is clear, and trying to be fair and honest and open with getting those closed. And that will ultimately, over time, lower the cost of it. Um, our general liability are largely slip and fall and property claims, but they still, um, we've, we've closed out nineteen of twenty-five of those year-to-date. One thing we pride ourselves on is our overall cost of workers' compensation has played, has been relatively level year over year for good, almost ten years now. Um, and that's 'cause we actively manage that claim the minute it gets filed, make sure they get, um, early access to the appropriate level of healthcare, help them work through it, um, directly. Um, this year, we've had ninety-three claims, and we've closed fifty-two of them. They have completed their care, and they're back to their pre-injury, um, state. Um, another thing we've really, really tried to focus on, and we're seeing some benefit of, we've increased patient contact by at least ten percent per month since January in Employee Health Services. Um, I think that's a, a, a credit to Monica Merrick, she's our nurse practitioner. She has been very, um, active and engaging with folks to, to let them know, this is what we can do. Why are you going to urgent care center? I can do that right here. Um, so over time, that's gonna have a big impact on our cost of care. Uh, this year, GPD has done a lot of hiring, and specifically, they're working towards the June Academy. Um, EHS worked with them to ensure that every one of their candidates will be cleared before that academy starts, um, with their, with their pre-employment health assessments, so there won't be any delay there. So that's a, that's a, this doesn't sound like a heavy lift, but it's scheduling twenty-five cardio evaluations over that short period of time. And one of the other, uh, benefits that we manage is, uh, retirement, and, and just since January, we've already processed thirty-nine retirements and drop. Um, we have over eighteen hundred annuities that we provide, uh, Benefit Administration and support for right now, and that number's gonna continue to go up. So for twenty-six, some of the things that, uh, uh, I think, uh, we are paying attention to, um, one, first, we are still in the very early process of defining our role with respect to this new relationship with GRU. It, it doesn't seem to be their highest priority of, of splitting, but I'm not gonna speak for them, um, but we're gonna continue to make sure whatever they, role they want us to do, we'll do it well, um, or we will transition it in a professional, uh, manner that doesn't, um, leave cer- leave those employees' services diminished them what they're seeing now. So the staffing's gonna stay the same there until we figure that relationship out. Uh, we don't have a lot of vacancies, so it'll be people if we start reducing staff. But we're not anywhere there. Obviously, one of the big things on, uh, healthcare costs is, uh, monitoring the impact of GLP-1 and immunosuppressants, uh, prescriptions impacting our plan. Uh, they are very expensive, and they are getting prescribed more and more. Some of our goals, we are working on a strategy to reduce, I mean, to increase the employer's contribution towards dependent, um, coverage. That, quite frankly, is what we hear the most of. It's expensive, and it's expensive when you cover a dependent. But the total's a total, so that's gonna be a longer-term, uh, uh, process. Monica and her staff are working on developing a more of an outward, uh, marketing strategy to get more people in Employee Health Services. Um, I will tell you, I've seen of waiting, I've seen people in the waiting room for the first time in years. So it is beginning to have a, and you all look like, oh, we don't want people. Yeah, waiting means our service is, is, is appreciated and utilized in the manner we want it to. We are gonna continue to work with the Steward, Workplace Stewardship Committee to address the needs of our customers. Um, and we're reviewing our voluntary benefit offering to ensure that what we are providing access to is, is affordable and valuable. There are some coverages that, that have been deteriorating a lot lately. Um, the dental choices are the biggest one, the networks are shrinking, and people, what good is having insurance if you can't actually access the, uh, the service? So, um, and then we are gonna continue to build on our benefits education plan to ensure that folks are using the plan that maximizes the value they get out of the plan, and at the same time, helps us control the cost of providing that. And I'll answer any other questions that you may have.
I don't see any lights. Thank you.
And this is our last department for today. Uh, this is the Technology Department. Uh, the core services are technical support for Workday, data conversion, security and integration for Workday, and customer ser- customer inquiries and troubleshooting assistance for Workday. As you all know, we're working with Barry Dunn to put together our own, um, uh, technology department. We have, um, a new technology director that, uh, we made an offer to, and he is scheduled to start May nineteenth. So we're hoping to update these core services as we go through, um, to the end of the budget cycle. The strategic connection will likely stay as best-in-class neighbor services. And on the budget trend side, uh, what we've done with the proposed budget is that we've left, um, as is, uh, compared to last year, just adjusting for salaries, um, and some minor operating expenditures. Uh, we have the, uh, GRU SLA funded at five point nine million dollars. We may need to lean on GRU a little bit going into fiscal year twenty-six, just because of the time crunch and the length of time that it's, um, taken us to get, uh, this person on board. We wanted to get it right. Um, I feel we have that person now. And what we'll do is, um, that operating line item that you see at seven point one million is probably going to be adjusted as, as the, as the, um, department flushes out in terms of operating expenditures and things like that. So we don't anticipate, um, going over that eight point four million dollar on the general fund. Um, that increase that you see in operating, though, that one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty, is driven by the increase for the Workday Maintenance Contract. And, um, you'll see the same on the operating side under other funds. Uh, that increase is due to the dark fiber expenses included in other funds, um, for GRU. Position levels right now are, um, estimated to stay the same, and we will be adding positions as needed once we, uh, flesh out what that new department will look like. And we are here to answer any questions you all may have.
All right, Mr. Book.
Yeah, just, uh, I thank Chief Staff, a little more detail, uh, you, you did just touch on the salaries and wages from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, essentially from seven hundred thousand to then nine hundred to then 900,000. And now we're up, we're going to be close, at least at the moment in these preliminary times, up close to a million. And just a little more detail about that might be helpful. If you know it now, present it now, but otherwise it'd be fine for the next presentation.
Okay.
The, and then explain more detail, dark fiber, what is that?
It's a very interesting question and I'm going to look over to, you know, he looked at me with the same deer in the headlights look that I have. So dark fiber, from what we understand, is lines that are in place but not actively used. They're like a redundancy thing. And, am I doing a good job?
Good job.
Everyone's looking at each other, so obviously it's probably worthwhile to explain.
Ms. Ramos is correct. There's, the way that, in this context, the way that GRU talks about dark fiber is a little bit different. It's actually a private connection, a private fiber network that is only the city and GRU's traffic is on. But we also have dark fiber, exactly as Ms. Ramos was discussing, which is like literally dark fiber. It's in the ground, but it's not lit or not being active. In this context, it's dark fiber in the context of just that private fiber connection that only the city and GRU use currently.
Right, so in my non-analytical term, I would think that sounds like secure servers that are specific to the users related to that. I know Workday is a tremendous proprietary software system and program that does a lot of things. And there is a number of organizations in North Central Florida that use Workday, and I do know it's costly. And I wonder if there's opportunities for any partnerships. This is really just a comment as it relates to Workday maintenance or sharing expertise that might be able to reduce costs across many organizations in our area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Book. I have thoughts about many of these things, but they're not particularly relevant, I guess. So I agree on both those counts. So the Workday, we always see the next new big thing come forward from the private sector that's going to somehow be more efficient and save us money one way or another, but it ends up not working out that way ever. But we're not the only ones in that position. And this is not the first such implementation that has come along. So there's not a lot we can do about that sort of thing, I suppose. Similarly, dark fiber, I understand the concept behind it, but I don't understand why it's more expensive this year than before. But that's neither here nor there. Commissioner Willis.
The new hire we're looking for in this, are they going to be a Workday expert? Are they going to come with some, just because I know that Workday touches everything across the city, but Workday exists in our technology department, right? That's where it's, lives or housed, right?
That team is housed in that department.
Right, so is this, who's the new, what's the new employee we're all trying to hire for this?
His name is Ed Nagy.
And that's a director of?
He will be a director of technology.
Does he bring some sort of administrative understanding or experience with these large systems?
He does, and he has experience with implementing a technology department from the very beginning. So he does come with that. We were very comfortable with his level of expertise and the questions that he was asking. He also has utility experience, so we thought it would be helpful for someone that understands the language that GRU speaks in helping us navigate separation.
Okay. That's probably not a budget conversation, but I think we have to, to some degree, give you all a little room because this is one of those things that we're transitioning, where we're going to have to give you all some room. And hopefully with a good new hire, we'll really be able to help us out here, help you all out, help the city out. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Willis. I don't see any lights on this one.
Okay. So to summarize, these are the departments that you all reviewed budgets for, proposed budgets for today. The total for these departments is 24 point, just under $25 million. Makes up, you know, 4.9% change from the fiscal year '25 adopted budget. The next set of departments that we're going to review are police, fire, procurement and public works. They make up the larger portion of the general fund budget. And we'll come back and do that with you all on May 22nd, as well as do, conduct the first public hearing for the fire assessment. And with that said, that concludes the presentation.
Very good, all right, thank you. And there's no, again, this is a workshop, so there's no motion to be made, but thank you. Matt Pluck.
Ron Ten, member comment?
All right, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a few things that I wanted to share. The first is yesterday in my box, I had a very interesting and exciting gift that was left for me. It is, first of all, Children's Book Week. And for anybody who knows me, I'm big on kids and youth, I'm big on literacy, and I'm big on civic engagement. And this book is one of those things that kind of pulls all of those together. The book is called Ella Goes to City Hall. And I haven't had a chance to flip through it yet, but I'm looking forward to flipping through it today. I am encouraging individuals who are excited about youth, who are excited about literacy, to go to amazon.com and pick up a copy of this. After I read it, I am going to be reading it to the young people in my life, but also going out into the community with this as well. Ella Goes to City Hall, something I'm very, very excited about, and it is available at amazon.com. Did want to just give a shameless plug for Krista Jones, who wrote this, and also was illustrated by Red Malon, but I'm very, very excited about this book. Yesterday, I know many of you, my colleagues, had the opportunity to go to the ribbon cutting. I didn't have a chance to make it, but yesterday I finally had a chance to go over to the Elite Force Academy. And wow, was I blown away. Really, really excited about what the Gainesville Housing Authority is doing through that initiative and want to chart pathways forward to support that because their goal is to provide an opportunity for low-income individuals to learn skills that could increase their income. And I think this kind of dovetails with our conversation that we had earlier today, a little bit about economic development. They have, through some other programs, been able to see residents through, I believe, their barber program go on and create their own barber shops and move into, one young man moved into his first home recently. So we see certainly some success and some forward movement in what that type of agency should be able to do. So we're grateful for that. I just wanted to put out there that hopefully, because I believe each one of those rooms seats 16 people. I think that's what I saw, and there are three rooms. I don't know how their schedule is going to go, but I do know that they are partnering with Santa Fe right now and Dr. Brody, through his ingenuity and creativity, is going to be bringing some of the VOTEC programs there. But they only have 16 chairs that are at each table, or at the tables in each room. And I'm hoping that shortly after the opening of this first cohort, I believe next week, that they don't have any space left. I really hope they don't have any space left. So Ms. Curry, I just want to put this on your mind. I'm wondering, and I don't know if we'll be able to do this, because the Eastside Recreation Center is there. I wonder if when they outgrow this program, if there may be a way that we can offer some space to them at some time. It's premature, I know. But as I walked through the spaces there yesterday, I got overjoyed and frankly hopeful that literally the residents of the GHA properties, because they're bringing in people from all of their properties, it's not just confined to that immediate area. The goal is to bring them from all over and hopefully, if they market it correctly and if the interest is there, they won't have the space and perhaps we do. Just throwing it out there. I will also say to my colleague here who's sitting right next to me, Commissioner Engel, you and I have now had a couple of conversations about the, what is it, the electrician apprentice programs that you've been affiliated with. And you know I've discussed with you the desire to bring some of that training out into East Gainesville. And I want to say here publicly that I want to circle back with you again. I mentioned our conversations yesterday to GHA and that if we could find a way to pull those into what they're doing. Being an electrician is a good field. It is a good income and I think that to be able to provide those types of apprenticeship programs in that community might be another way to bolster this programming and get folks on the road to some good income.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you very much. And the last announcement that I wanted to make has to do with the community care call out that is happening today at 5:00. I see Brandy in the back nodding her head. I don't know if Manager Curry would mind her coming forward, but mentioning briefly what will be taking place today at the TB McPherson Center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Can she, you mind if she comes forward? Thank you very much, Manager Curry. Community care call out.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Randy Stavner, Community Health Initiatives with Gainesville Fire Rescue. Commissioner Duncan Walker is correct at TB McPherson this evening from 5:00 to 7:00. We will have a collection of community-based resources there from mental health services to our community paramedicine program, GPD, and A Thousand Voices will also be performing a couple of songs around 6:00 p.m. So we welcome our community that has been impacted by the Easter Sunday incident to come join us and get connected to resources in that space.
Thank you very much, Brandy, and thank you to everybody who's worked on this. I certainly plan to be present and hopefully a few more of my colleagues can come and certainly want the community to come out and be a part of this. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan Walker. Commissioner Book.
So two or three brief announcements also in picking up where you just left off on the apprentice program, Commissioner Duncan Walker. The Santa Fe College has a number of graduations each semester, and one of probably the most motivational, one of the many that they have, is the apprenticeship graduation, which was last week. If you see people coming through, have spent a tremendous amount of time both working, and Commissioner Engel, I know you can speak about this in droves, but both working and going to school at the same time. And so that graduation is something else, and I only mention that so when your efforts are followed through, you probably want to loop in those partners that deal with that. You may already be there, but that's, that is very good. Pine Ridge happens to be one of our lower-income communities in the great Northwest. It's had just tremendous travails and up and downs over many, many years. And one of the positive efforts most recently was finally getting an owner, and this is based on community builder Chief Hillhouse, getting the owner to put a new roof on where we're doing youth programming. And that's a big deal right there. So I just want to mention, and I see in the audience, I was going to mention that regardless, but that's what you do when you have points of contact in areas, is you try and figure out how to resolve issues that may not be funded by the city, but basically help the efforts that leverage our youth and programming in the city. So I thought that was pretty significant. And similar along those lines, one of the programming downtown was a Star Wars event last, I don't know, Saturday or Sunday, kind of lose track of time. But what I thought was most unique about that event was it was a whole lot of little biddies, a whole bunch of young kids out there. And I always like it when we see our areas that we're not just programming for a specific segment of the community. For example, nighttime has a robust entertainment in hospitality district, but it's primarily, would be tailored to adults, especially when you have music and things like that. But this was really tailored to our youth and I thought that what a good event and allows to program across many more hours. And that's precisely what we should be doing in our downtown. So just a couple of atta boys, atta men and atta women, but also just a couple of comments about some things I saw over the last couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Book. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. I did want to finish up, just have a couple of topics related to the budget. First of all, thank you to Staff. I know this is such a big lift going through the budget. It's now going into our third difficult budget year that we're having these conversations about and it's, you know, the budget is just sort of numbers on board, but it impacts everything that we do, how we can do it, where people are allocated, where all of this goes. And just, and as we're going into all this, it kind of just, I want to make sure that we're all kind of flowing in the same direction. What we saw here today was the first step in all this, it was what the departments came out with, it does not fill our budget gap, it does not get in there. I hope that we're all sort of growing in the same direction. And as we're talking about this, how important it is that we get ourselves to a place where we are leaving future commissions with a fiscally sustainable, financially sustainable government. Just to go over the timeline so that everyone remembers where we were with this. In 2023, we voted to do a very aggressive deficit reduction plan in order to get GRU debt down. We cut $20 million roughly from our budget overall. We made up for that with a mix of tax increases and cuts. It was about 50/50, about $9 million in tax increases, major, major cuts across the board for various, for positions, for operational expenses. Since then, it's been transferred over to the GRU authority. The GRU authority has kept that same deficit reduction plan, as far as I understand. It is not any more aggressive than 70% by 2033. They have not reduced rates, but what we've seen is about $8 million cut from our budget since that time, $6.8 million based on an equation that we don't agree with. $3 million was cut out for IT, then $3 million was put back in. $1.4 million was cut out based on they disagreed with contracts. Another $1.1 million is cut out for rental fees along county roads, for county streetlights. And another about $400,000 was cut out just to pay for the lawsuit against the city of Gainesville to stop the voters from being heard on their vote for, in November. And we've not raised taxes at all in that time period. So we have enveloped all of those cuts. We, our employees are feeling it, people are feeling it out into the community. And I just, we need to make sure that we are sustainable. It isn't sustainable for us to continue, pull things out of reserves every time we're doing that or pull money out of here or there. I don't think it's frankly sustainable for the GRU authority to continue to say every time they have a new shiny object that they're going to use. Government services contribution as a slush fund as opposed to simply saying, this is our payment in lieu of taxes. This is what we pay to the government for use of the right of ways for this. It is not a slush fund. It is an amount of money that is paid the same way that I pay my taxes every single year. And so I think we need to, I hope that all of our charter officers are working together to come back to us in June with, you know, hard cuts across the board and that, and that, you know, that we're getting to a point where no matter what the hard decisions we have to make are, that we are leaving future commissions and future residents in this community, a financially sustainable city, that, you know, that we're not having to make hard decisions for every year. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese. A couple of things I have before we close. This Friday evening, I was out at Bo Diddley Plaza for our Free Fridays series and specifically this, the past Friday was the part of the Live and Local series with that. And it was very specifically high school bands and high school students performing solo. And it was really, really terrific. And the Bo Diddley Plaza was full and excited. And I really, I want to commend Music GNV and Brandon Telk for putting that together, for being our go-to organization in person for the Live and Local series within Free Fridays. It was a really good time. I really urge everyone to come be a part of Free Fridays, which is economic development at work. We take these things, again, for granted, but that is a thing that we do to give residents and visitors the opportunity to enjoy downtown in hopes that while they are downtown, they will stop and get dinner or have a drink or do something to leave a little money for our local merchants downtown. And it really is an amazing series and it was really terrific to see teenagers onstage, both solo artists and as bands. Their energy and their passion for what they were doing is really, really pleasant, as is their artistry. They're very good at what they do also. Also, I'll note that while we're here in our windowless room, time does not stop. The world goes on around us and there was a, as we've been here, a significant historical event outside. The Catholic Church chose a new Pope, Pope Leo XIV, who was the first American to be chosen Pope in 460 years of Catholicism being practiced here in the United States, or what has become the United States. So it's not a religious event we're doing here, but this is a major historical event that happened while we were here in our wonderful windowless room. So I see no further lights and with that, we are adjourned.